Number two is reports from the San Diego Police Department regarding recruitment and retention updates. Chief Zimmerman and Captain Hara, how are you doing today?
We are doing just great, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. And the floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much. Good afternoon. As you heard, I am Chief of Police, Sally Zimmerman, and with me here today is Captain Jerry Hara, who is our captain over our Communications Division. I know you have in front of you our reports, but many of our numbers change, as sometimes they do daily and sometimes hourly, since our report has been submitted. So the staffing information that we are going to update you on today will be our current numbers as of today. Regarding our sworn staffing, our fiscal year 2017 budgeted number of sworn officers is 2039, 2039, and today our actual number is 1,832. This means that we are 207 below our budgeted staffing. As a reminder, all police officers are counted from me, as the Chief of Police, to our newest recruit in the academy. And currently, we do have 96 either in the academy or in our field training. We also anticipate sending about 24 new recruits to our Regional Police Academy that is going to start on May the 22nd. So again, as you see, these numbers will change. We currently have an attrition rate of 13 per month, and we have lost 15 since the beginning of this fiscal year to other law enforcement agencies. Turning your attention to our recruiting efforts. Our recruiting and background unit has been extremely busy, reaching out to all of our communities and in many different ways because there's not just one way to recruit. Our department efforts have included job fairs, community fairs, open houses, newspaper, radio, TV, and online outreach, just to name some of those efforts. We have also traveled to other cities, and we work closely with our military and schools to find the very best to join our police department. But as you see, even with all of our outreach, we have seen a 36% decrease, let me repeat that, a 36% decrease in the number of applicants applying to be San Diego police officers over the last two fiscal years. Now, what we are experiencing here in San Diego is not unique to our police department. Many police departments across our country are having difficulty recruiting and retaining police officers. It is not uncommon for one police department to travel to another city just to target recruiting their police officers. We have had that happen to us here, but we have also done that. Many police departments are hiring, and we are competing for the very best qualified candidate from a shrinking number of people who want to be police officers. This is why our police department is exploring a possible community partnership opportunity with Health Sciences High School. This partnership would be a gateway into law enforcement for high school students starting at the school located on University Avenue in City Heights. Now, while the students fulfill their educational requirements, they will have an opportunity to study, work, and be a part of the San Diego Police Department. In this law enforcement pipeline, students will learn what the basic requirements entail, be educated about what behaviors would disqualify a candidate in law enforcement, and work on skills that would translate into a successful graduate from our Regional Police Academy. Now, turning to our professional civilian staffing. Our fiscal year 2017 budgeted number of civilian personnel is 557, and our current staffing is 509, meaning as of today, this is a deficit of 48 positions. Before I turn this over to Captain Hara to talk specifically about our Communications Division, I want to thank all of you, I want to thank Mayor Council, but also all of you on the city, Mayor Faulkner, but also all of you on the City Council. The efforts that you have put forward over these last couple of years have greatly assisted us in our recruiting and retaining all of our department personnel. And I would tell you, if those efforts had not been undertaken and passed by all of you on the City Council, these numbers would be dramatically worse. So I don't want to lose sight of that. I want to thank you for all of your efforts. Obviously, there's still more work to be done, but we want to thank you. So with that, I'll now turn it over to Captain Jerry Hara, which will specifically talk about Communications.
In fiscal year 2016, San Diego Police Communications Division received 1.4 million calls. 615,000 of those calls were 911 calls, and we are on par this fiscal year to have about the same number of 911 calls. The Communications Recruiting Team has been working very hard to recruit new dispatchers. Last year, they attended over 150 recruiting events. And in addition, they have attended numerous community events, such as the Hillcrest Farmers' Market, the Persian New Year at NTC, the Girl Force Summit at UCSD, the Tech Festival in Miramasa, and several sundown movie events in various elementary school districts, including District 2 and District 6. This year, they also attended numerous recruiting events and job fairs to target our military veterans. At Camp Pendleton, at MCS Miramar, they attended a naval career fair at the Scottish Rights Center, 29 Palms, and NAS North Island. This past quarter, the recruit teams have attended several college career fairs as well, at UCSD, CSU San Bernardino, USD, and Southwestern College. In calendar year 2016, we had a total of 2,138 applicants who took the critical test for police dispatcher at police headquarters and at City Personnel Department. When we updated this committee back in October of 2016, I was happy to report that we hired 35 dispatchers that calendar year. I am now happy to report, as of today, we have hired 44 dispatchers since January of 2016. And even better, 39 of those 44 are still working in Communications today. As of last week, we only had three vacancies for dispatcher. However, this week, we have four vacancies, but it is for a much well-deserved police promotion to lead dispatcher. Communications has done a lot of improvement throughout this past year. We've done a ton of improvements in our processes, increased staffing and performance. We implemented a new dispatcher schedule that made us more effective. We established new staffing minimums for 911 dispatchers during the impacted times. The department's phone tree on the non-emergency line has shown great results. For example, January to March of last year, 2016, we received 223,000 administrative calls. This year, from January to March, 140,000 administrative calls. That is a reduction of almost 85,000 calls in three months. We will continue to monitor and evaluate each month. Now, we do have some officers that are still working overtime. However, they only work overtime in Communications when we have staffing shortages. Shortages in the phone room are becoming less and less. For example, last summer, when we had the crisis, in July of 2016, we had over 1,600 hours of overtime for officers. Last month, we had 841 hours. That's almost a 50% reduction. Let me give you an example of the performance that our outstanding dispatchers are doing. For last week, just last week, April 17th through the 23rd of April, we received 11,451 911 calls. The average wait time, three seconds. The division's monthly reports are posted on our website, including March 2017, and when you see it, you will see an all-time record high of 95.29% of our 911 calls answered in 10 seconds or less. That exceeds, far exceeds, state and national standards. And I am also proud to announce, your San Diego Police Department Comm. Center was named Comm. Center of the Year. Since implementation of the new phone tree and our increased staffing and our performance, our performance has increased quite a bit also on the admin line. The average admin wait time is 266 seconds, or about four and a half minutes. Last month, 57% of our admin calls were answered in less than two minutes, though. 57% less than two minutes. However, if citizens do call during peak hours, the same peak hours for 911, the wait time might be just a little bit more. Admin callers can use other means of reporting, such as online reporting or the Get It Done app, both on their mobile device or on their home computer. And as of today, we have 16 dispatched trainees, and 11 of those trainees are scheduled to clear training later this summer. That will help us staff our floor and as well as our phone room. Our goal is to eventually reach three minutes or less on the admin line. We believe, once we have no vacancies and a fully trained staff, not 16 trainees, a fully trained staff, we believe we are able to achieve this goal. I would also like to echo the Chief's comments. I'd like to thank the Mayor and City Council for your continued support of our Comm. Center. And lastly, I would like to thank our exceptional dispatchers, several of them are here today in the audience, for their hard work and relentless dedication. We'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Before we move on to public comments, we have some comments from our IBA.
Good afternoon, thank you. I just wanted to explain a handout that I gave to the council members and staff before the start of this meeting that shows the same data that the Chief just presented, but over a five-year history, just to provide some context about the challenges it's been ongoing for both sworn positions and civilian positions. And so I give you five years of history of the budgeted positions, the filled positions, and then the variance. And I'll just note that the variance is a moving target because you'll see that the budgeted positions have increased over the past several years, so just keep that in mind. And I'm available to discuss that as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. We'll now move to public comments. We have Brian Marvel with time seated by Mike Fender, so you'll have a total of six minutes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Brian Marvel, President of the San Diego Police Officers Association. I want to thank you Chairman Kate for scheduling this important informational item about SDPD staffing. Despite the city's lack of progress in increasing staffing levels since the passage of the city's five-year plan in 2012 and last year's update, I think it's important that we first recognize the tremendous efforts made by Chief Zimmerman and my officers to continue to stretch limited resources in the interest of public safety. The Chief and our department have earned high marks for keeping the peace during several large crowd events that presented potential challenges, including the rally and protests associated with the then presidential candidate Donald Trump's visit, the All-Star Game, San Diego Pride, and Comic-Con. Recently, when a serial killer began preying on San Diego's most vulnerable population, the Chief marshaled department resources to quickly identify and capture the perpetrator, preventing more loss of life and restoring a sense of safety. With one of the lowest staffing levels of any large city, investigative units within the department remain depleted and are still being eliminated, augment patrol divisions that can't meet the department's minimum of levels of recommended staffing on a daily basis. For example, the department's centralized auto theft unit essentially disbanded with their duties reassigned to the area station investigators that are already overwhelmed by workloads caused by over 85 positions not being filled by experienced and trained detectives. With the passage of the five-year plan in 2012, the city pledged to increase staffing levels by more than 300 officers. By 2016, the city had made little progress, increasing staffing by only 30 officers. But rather than ramping up to meet the promises made in the five-year plan, the city simply moved the goalposts, pushing the plan's original goals from fiscal year 2018 to fiscal year 2021. Today's staffing levels, including officers in our academies and training pipeline, currently stand at 1,832, just 11 higher than we had in 2012, when the council passed the five-year plan with great fanfare. Worse, anticipated attrition, projected staffing levels will decrease over the next few months. We will have less officers at the end of June this year than we had in June of 2012. This places into question the sincerity of the promise made with the passage of the five-year plan and its subsequent updates. Simply put, we're going in the wrong direction. It's time for the committee, the City Council, and the Mayor to provide some straight talk to the citizens of San Diego and the officers within the SDPD. They've been asked to do far too much for far too many years without providing any relief. In public statements, this council has pledged to meet the challenges posed by the surge of calls related to mental illness, public's desire to be proactive and community-oriented policing, timely responses to calls, and the impacts of extensive homelessness. We also have to include data collection required by AB 953 alone. The Racial Profiling Act is expected to consume an additional 17,000 hours of patrol officer's time next year, further straining their ability to meet the needs of our citizens. Are the past pledges from the City Council sincere? And if so, how do you propose the San Diego Police Department meets its stated goals when the report being presented today demonstrates there's been essentially no progress related to increased sworn staffing for the past five years? The result: less proactive policing, significantly increased response times, and overwhelmed investigators. The situation will only get worse with every recruit class that goes unfilled and the inability to retain our officers. Real change will require real commitment. Members of the SDPOA stand ready to meet your commitment and provide the public safety services our citizens deserve, but we need to create new solutions to address these unmet challenges, especially with the current candidate pool that we have. I want to thank all the officers that are in here and all the officers that I represent. They're doing a fantastic job. Appreciate the effort that the Chief's doing, and we stand ready to work with you to solve this process moving forward. And let's not kick this can to 2021. Let's fix it right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marvel. We will now move to committee member question and comment. We will have Councilmember Zaff go first.
Thank you. Yeah, I wish we'd make more progress with the number of people who we can recruit. So I just have, I have some questions regarding recruitment. It just seems like we're static. We're like at 140 before, now we're like 200 down. Are we like losing more? To who mostly, or to what, why?
Yeah, I appreciate that question. In years past, it has been to the Sheriff's Department, but again, from Mayor Faulkner, your efforts with the packages, the additional funds for our police officers. We're not seeing that to the extent that we had seen it before. As an example, we lost, of our 15, we lost two to the Sheriff's Department last year, but we lost three to Escondido. We also lost one to Dallas Police Department, who's having their own issues of recruiting and retention. And so there is, as we looked at the 15 and where they went, they were kind of all over the place. So we didn't see one trend to one agency as we had in the past, which was the Sheriff's Department.
So do we still have four academies planned?
We still have four academies a year, and again, we're grateful that we have the ability with the budget and looking, I know we have budget coming up here just next week, and in that budget, we can hire 43 per academy. The reality was, is that we have not been able to fill those 43 slots in each of those academies. Again, even with all of our tremendous recruiting efforts, down over 36% over these last two fiscal years of people just applying to be San Diego police officers. So those vacancies, we haven't, you know, we're grateful, we want to make sure we're able to keep our 43, you know, in each of those academies, but we haven't been able to reach that most of the time.
How many have been in the last few academies?
We've hired just, you know, this year, again, we'll be able, as an example, this next academy, we can put 43 in. That starts, I believe, on the 22nd of May, but we're looking at no more than 24 to put in, so about half.
So I know we have really stringent requirements, that, you know, a lot of testing, 100 to one, what is it? How many do you go through to get one that actually goes into the academy that is accepted?
Yeah, it's, it's less than 5% of everybody who applies that gets accepted to the police academy. And I will tell you, we should never apologize for having high standards. And I would not want to lower our standards. I think that would cause all kinds of other issues. But we believe that there, you know, there are people out there. We just need to continue our recruiting efforts. But I would tell you, it's not one reason why people are not applying to be police officers, there are many different reasons. It's, it's an extremely challenging time to be a police officer. You know, the scrutiny, you know, you have those that are leaving the profession afraid after a long career if they make a mistake, that they, you know, will be the next YouTube video and on the news, and not just their career and their reputation, but their family's reputation. Some don't feel that they have the, you know, the support of the community council. And so there's a variety of reasons, just, you know, the negative press that is all, that happens quite a lot in the media. So there's not just one reason, pay, compensation, benefits, you know, it's really everything together that is causing the issue. A lot of times, we even hear from those that we have recruited or are police officers right now, that their family, they want to stay, or they want to join the police department, but their family is so afraid of them going into this position that they're talking them out of it. So again, it's not just one reason, there are many reasons.
Okay, so I don't know, can you do the math for me? To have four full academies, how many would you have to interview? Thousands?
Thousands, we, yeah, several, several thousands that, that apply to be police officers.
Not interviewed, but, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, that apply. We have several thousands that, that do apply. It's a seven-step process, which I would tell you is that we've been able to cut, you know, the time literally down to about three months or so, and we have our academies, you know, four times a year or so. Pretty good pipeline and pretty streamlined, although we're constantly looking for ways to even streamline it, you know, for a shorter amount of time. But four times a year. And we do give those job offers, you know, as soon as we can give a job offer, we give the job offer, saying the academy will start. That's why we have our Candidate Assistant Mentoring Program as, that, you know, basically gets the recruit prepared to enter the academy, because we have found that a lot of the recruits weren't prepared for what the academy was going to look like. Since we've instituted that program, we've had some great success, so much success that other police departments here locally, it's a regional academy, are now looking at doing the same thing. And so again, you know, this, the next thing that we're looking at was in my remarks, and I talked about having that pipeline to the profession with the high school. So we can start, you know, we're not going to solve this tomorrow, all right? So we can start that pipeline and to plant that seed to become San Diego police officers. And so we're looking at this track as an opportunity for those high school students that are interested in joining our police department. So we, we let them know what would disqualify you, because the, most of the reason why people are disqualified, they're not going to meet the requirements. They did things in their lives that were very bad choices, that were not going to be police officers here or anywhere likely. And so to plant that seed early, to let them make good life choices, that they would be able to be hired.
I'll just ask one more question, because I see all my colleagues around the lights wanting to ask questions also, so I'll just ask one more. Now that you've been out there recruiting at different events and locations, is there anything in particular that is more effective that you're finding? I don't know, I wrote down a little few notes, like some of the military type, Fleet Week, air shows, I don't know where you might attract, you know, people who are interested in military type events?
And I have Lieutenant Mike Swanson here that could answer the specific, but one of the things that has been most successful for us is that when we're able to get that candidate onto a ride-along, they often join our police department.
Oh, interesting.
And they talk about the professionalism, and here we've all talked about it, is that, you know, we, being one of the largest cities in the United States with one of the fewest staffing, and yet we're one of the safest cities in the United States. And that goes to the caliber and the professionalism and the bravery of our police officers, professional civilian staff. Every single day, they're putting on the line, trying to make a positive difference. And those candidates see that. So when we're able to get them on the ride-along, we view every officer as a recruiter, because that's been one of our greatest, I think, aspects, is to be able to, you know, really seal the deal, to really make that deal, to have somebody join the San Diego Police Department.
Do you go to, you said colleges, community colleges, seems like a good...
We do. We do that, and, you know, there's really no avenue, I would tell you, that we don't explore. Just yesterday, even myself, just yesterday, we're all recruiters, from the Chief down to someone who just joined the police department. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to speak at, one of our retired assistant chiefs, Roulette Armstead, has a public safety class that she teaches at San Diego State, probably about 40, 50 students in there, and all I talked about was our police department and why you should join our police department. So we are all recruiters, we go anywhere, anytime you've ever said, even out of state.
Okay, and I just real, want to thank, thank you and let you know that I did another ride-along, and this time, I've been putting it off because I hate getting up that early, but I was there at quarter to five in the morning at Western Division. I wanted to see, you know, what was going, I've done the afternoon, I've done late at night, you know, and this was the morning I wanted to see. Wonderful, wonderful officers on that quality-of-life team, and we did so much in just five hours. That was only half the shift, I was exhausted, and they had to go for another five hours. I was surprised to find no coffee there at 4:45 in the morning. But if anyone wants to donate coffee to our officers, I can tell you, the first stop I asked for was Starbucks. So I could go out, I'm like, surely they have coffee. Anyway, so they were just wonderful, the way that they interacted with the public and their calm demeanor, and I just wanted to say that, you know, they were terrific, and they all have been on all of the ride-alongs, but, you know, they just have, they do have, and a lot of people don't say it, but they have compassion, they understand these people, they know how to interact, and, you know, we always talk about escalation versus de-escalation. I saw nothing but de-escalation, and they had plenty of opportunities to, you know, arrest if they, you know, if they had wanted to, but, you know, they're, they're out there and just trying to get a good rapport and trying to get services to these people, trying to get them to, you know, make better choices or get some services or a bed and things like that. Everyone turned them down, but they tried. Anyway, thank you for that time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Zaff. We'll move on to Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, and thank you for this update. I certainly appreciate all the work that all of our officers are out there doing every day. I know how stretched thin you all are, and certainly representing many of the challenged communities in the Third Council District. I am just grateful, on behalf of my constituents, that you are doing what you do every day and doing it with respect and treating people with kindness, and I'm just, just grateful and certainly do double down and commit to try and solve this and figure out how we are going to turn the trends around and get people encouraged and interested to want to join you and to see this as a wonderful career opportunity, and also want to work for the San Diego Police Department, because I know those that do very much like each other, and they see this as a bond, as a community, and they're, they're proud to be San Diego police officers. And so I appreciate some of the good news that I heard out of the information here, that some of the recruiting efforts that Council you mentioned has asked for in recent years, I think, has helped us stem the tide. We're not actually digging ourselves out, but could be worse than we are today, but it is still frustrating when we hear that five years later, you know, from a staffing level perspective, we're no further off than where we were. I wanted to dig down a little bit deeper from your conversation with Councilmember Zaff and figure out, you know, you mentioned there's a variety of reasons why people are not choosing to become police officers, or perhaps that they're choosing to leave the, leave our police force or retire early. Do you have any information, like where some of the biggest problems are? If we only have so much, so much resources to work with, where's our biggest bang for their buck? Where are, where are some of the, what are some of those, can you prioritize those reasons why people are choosing not to become police officers or are ineligible to?
Yes, they've committed felonies, recent drug use, numerous DUIs.
So those are for those who are disqualified? You mentioned that people are disincentivized or not...
Well, that's what I was saying, is, is, you know, we get a lot of people to apply, but the reality is, just because somebody applies doesn't mean that they're a qualified candidate. We get a lot of applications, but a lot of them are going to be disqualified for reasons why I just said. They may have committed a felony, recent drug use, numerous DUI, I mean, so a lot of reasons why they would be disqualified. So that's why we do all different types of outreach, you know, and there's different generations, too. Some get their information, they prefer to get it from a smartphone or online, others would still prefer maybe to get it from a fair, or, you know, my sheet on the news or newspaper or something to that effect. But our greatest asset, our greatest recruiters, to be able to get that candidate on a ride-along, and we've had many of them say that they have done ride-alongs with several different police departments, but what sealed the deal was the ride-along with us, because they talk about the professionalism, to your point, as you said, Councilmembers Zaff, the care, the compassion, the concern that our police officers show in our community policing philosophy to our community, and that's what sealed the deal.
I could see that. Maybe asking the question from another way, the five-year plan, what was successful in that and what was not? Where did we fall very short of our goals?
Most of it comes down to money and to the resources, to be able to, to fund the things that, in the five-year plan, it was, the five-year plan was extremely comprehensive. We've updated it now two or three times, and, you know, it does all come down to money.
But our budgeted positions here have gone up about 70 over the last five years, but we've not been able to fill those, and of course, the variances have gone up, too, because of the difference there. So we're funding more over the last five years, but we're just not able to increase the staffing level.
Right, and if you, you know, if you recall, and this is, I know, before you were on City Council, but, you know, we had, you know, during the recession, is that not only did we have hundreds and hundreds of police officers leave in about 2008, 2009 to preserve their benefits, but then right after that, we didn't hire for more than a year. So we had hundreds of police officers leave, we, pretty much all at once, you know, over that short period of time, we didn't hire, and then just the normal attrition during the other year that we didn't hire, and then we just hired in small numbers, and it's just been in these last few years that we've been able... And it's just been in these last few years that we've been able to hire to our full-budgeted strength, which is great news. But then we have a lot of negativity and, you know, what's going on across the country with the dialogue of what is happening. So there's a lot of, lot of different reasons. There's not just one reason. It wasn't just one reason in one year, and now it's the same reason this year. Things have changed.
Sure. You mentioned we had a thirty-six percent decrease in total applications.
Yes.
Do you know how that compares to the national average? You said all police departments are.
I don't have the statistics for the other cities, but I would tell you, I am in constant communication with other police chiefs, not just here locally, but across the country. And many are experiencing the very same issues that we are experiencing.
Do you feel that, I mean, again, this is a national phenomenon. Do you feel that we're better off or worse off or about the same as that, for that factor that other police departments are seeing? Because there's some national climate around a de-incentivization, disincentivizing people to be become police officers?
Yeah, it's interesting that you say that, talking to other police chiefs, in some cases were worse, in other cases were better. So, you know, it really, each one has their own unique issues that they're dealing with. And so some are maybe only down fifty, we're down about, you know, just over two hundred. Others are down, are looking to hire five hundred or six hundred that they're down. So it really just depends.
And I also want to thank for the recruiting efforts that I've seen out in the community. You're actively out there at many of our community festivals, and I think it's not just a positive face for that engagement with community members, but hopefully also getting some interested recruits. How is that going with communities of color and some of the work that we're trying to do to diversify our police force?
Yeah, we, we spend a significant amount of time in all of our communities, particularly those that are very diverse. And, you know, we talked about this pipeline, specifically looking at that school, which is a very diverse school. And I would say, you know, the last probably, you know, eight, nine academies, maybe even more, have averaged about fifty percent minorities and nor female.
Wow, that's incredible.
Yes.
I didn't hear this in testimony, but veterans and returning veterans, is there any particular outreach to that opportunity for those that are leaving the, leaving service for civilian life?
Definitely. And as a matter of fact, we work very closely with our military, obviously, you know, which is good, because we have this right here with, I think, the largest footprint in North America for our military, right here in San Diego. So that does give us an advantage. And I would say anywhere from twenty-five to maybe thirty percent of our recruits are former military. But what we've also seen is that a lot of them are not from here. So although they may initially join the San Diego Police Department, then they, things change and they may go back home. So again, you know, there's just not one reason. It could be many reasons. Just to give you another one, we have officers that have left for other police departments out of state because their spouse have gotten a great job out of state, and now they're leaving to follow their spouse. So again, it's not just one reason, it's many reasons.
Yep, yep, yep. Really quick, I also wanted to touch on the dispatcher's information that you shared today. And I appreciate, thank you so much for helping to correct the nine-one-one emergency dispatcher situation that we faced last year. That's good news. We still have a lot of constituents that call in that are, feel like they're on wait for ten or twenty minutes. So I'm imagining the non-emergency line is what you referred to as the administrative calls and how you saw a significant reduction, eighty-five thousand over the last year. And I wonder how many of those are drop-off calls that people don't want to wait ten or twenty minutes. You also mentioned the Get It Done app, and I just, I have it on my phone. I pulled it up really quick. And I actually didn't see, I think, a lot of the things that people commonly call the police non-emergency line for, if it's, you know, a noise complaint or a break-in that happened yesterday that they just need to be able to report. So if that's an area that we can help to streamline and provide some technological efficiencies, I think that could be value, valuable to the public. Didn't know if you had any comment on other ways that we can help to, help to assist in the administrative calls and responses.
Yeah, we're taking a look at a whole bunch of new processes. Coming up this summer, we're going to have a new CAD system. It's not about working faster, it's about working smarter. We are working also with our traffic division. Right now, a lot of our complaints that come through the non-emergency line deal with parking issues. And so we are working with traffic division to see if perhaps we can have a separate number for parking issues. They don't have to call the non-emergency line, they would have a separate line. And they have their own parking enforcement dispatcher as well. So we can get a parking enforcement officer to those, to those types of calls.
Excellent. I'd love to be able to work with you on ideas that we can, I think especially in a challenged budget year, be able to provide more assistance and resources to help you kind of streamline the easy things that you do, because you all are out there doing some very challenging situations every single day. I think, you know, trying to get some information out of you to figure out, how do we help you get this done? And if the one piece of information I heard is that we need more money. And I'd love to be able to stretch ourselves as much as we can to be able to offer that. And we're going to be where we're going to be as we go through the budget discussions. But, you know, I'd encourage you to figure out some other information or maybe dive a little deeper in the data to some of the contributing factors why people are not interested in becoming police officers or maybe showed an interest in getting an application but decided never to actually apply or otherwise fell out of the pool. I would very cautiously recommend, maybe we look, we look at our criteria for people that want to become a police officer, if a young man at nineteen did a very stupid thing, but, you know, paid his debt to society or otherwise by the age of twenty-five or twenty-six, showed that he had corrected his course of his life and starting a family and was just looking to get on his feet. But that was just a checkbox that is just out of the gate disqualifying him from moving forward in the process. Maybe there's some more subjective, common sense application that we could do to try to look for people that are probably meant to, could be good police officers, but are otherwise automatically disqualified. It's just one of the things that I, I hope we can hear more recommendations to help you be able to expand the pool of applicants, because I definitely wanted to figure out a solution to this. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Vice Chair Bree.
Well, first of all, since joining the city council in December, I've really grown to appreciate much more all that you do every day to keep our community safe. And, you know, I'm impressed that we have about the lowest crime rate of any major city. So thank you all. And a few weeks ago, I went on a tour of the dispatch center. I got to listen in on calls, both a dispatcher talking to a man who was calling in because his mentally ill wife was inside the house with a gun. And the police responded appropriately. And then also got to listen in with a second dispatcher who was talking to the police and really got to, at least, you know, in a very superficial way, appreciate the complex, all the different screens, all that's going on. I got to sort of see all that the dispatchers deal with every day and appreciate that, you know, this situation has been turned around. So thank you. And it was two women that I happened to sit with. One has been with the department, I think eighteen years, one five years. They both love their jobs, very dedicated. So that really says a lot about the quality that we have, and it's so important to our city. I view, you know, that we have both a short-term and a long-term problem. Short-term, we have vacancies we need to fill, and long-term, we need to build our applicant pool. And I love hearing about the program you're doing with the Health Sciences High School. And hopefully, if that works, you'll expand it to high schools around the city, the county, and also start younger in other communities around the country. They have explorer programs where they start kids much younger, learning about what it's like to be a police officer.
We have that here, too. We have our cadet programs. Matter of fact, Captain Hera here started as a cadet.
Oh, you did? So you're a tribute to that.
So that is a very robust program that we have.
Great. Okay. Well, I think that, things like that, and you're a tribute to that. So, okay. Okay. Hopefully, your kids are in it.
They're not old enough yet, but they will be.
Okay, good. Okay. Got to raise the next generation. And then, you know, we have, we have, so we need to, you know, create the long-term applicant pool, and then we have the short-term pool and the problem, and we need new solutions. And so you're, I sort of feel like, I'm not going to come up with like the, you know, there's no magic bullet. I think you've said that. You have to do a lot of things, you have to do them repetitively. But I want to know if it's worth bringing in, I hate to use the word outside expert or just looking at best practices around the country. But I know in, you know, in my business life, you know, often you hit a wall in, when you're trying to introduce a new product or trying to start a company. And you kind of have to regroup. And, you know, if there's anything this council can do to help you, we would like to.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
And I don't think that should say anything bad about you. It's just, that's part of life.
Yeah, you know, as a matter of fact, Councilmember Kate and I have had many conversations about potentially looking at some outside with it. We've looked at other police departments that have tried that. It's been, some are just recently have done it and others have not had much results with it, others, you know, potentially, it's potential. So we are looking and exploring all possibilities.
And I, I don't know if there's someone within the organization whose task is to be the director of recruiting? I mean, I'm assuming there is.
We have Lieutenant Mike Swanson who's here. But it's, again, it's not just one person.
I understand, but there's some, there's a point person who's responsible, I understand. But I liked when you said everybody, because you're all ambassadors for the police department, whether you're at the grocery store, at a community festival, or riding, you know, in a police car, you're all representatives of our, of our police force. And in a sense, you're always recruiting.
That's very much. And we, you all of you are recruiters also. So we view our entire city as recruiters.
Right. So I have a few questions. So, you know, I've read that over the years, we've lost, you know, police officers to the sheriff's department and to neighboring police departments. Is it primarily because of different working conditions, equipment, or is it really come down to salary?
Yeah, most of it was pay and benefits. And I know you're new to the council, but we've given several presentations and, you know, it used to be that, you know, with the sheriff's department, that our police officers didn't have to take their kids out of school, they didn't have to, you know, sell their house, move even, even a block. And they joined the sheriff's department and they were immediately making, you know, more than a thousand or more dollars take-home pay than we were. So yes, you know, so some of the efforts of yourselves and the mayor has greatly assisted that, as you see in these numbers here. Instead of having many, they're actually not even as high as the Escondido Police Department, that we lost, three of the fifteen Escondido, we've lost two to the sheriff's department. So we're not seeing that as much to the sheriff's department at this particular time. But yeah, that was, that was a huge issue, and most of it was because of take-home pay.
So, let's see, another question. So we have room for forty-three people in each academy?
Correct.
If we were, and we are budgeting for four academies in the next fiscal year. What do you, and I read that in 2016, we had a hundred and forty recruits in the academies, of whom a hundred and twenty-two graduated. So how many do you think we will realistically have in 2018?
Well, our hope is to have a hundred and seventy, so all of them, you know, all forty-three in each of the, of the four academies. The glass is always half-full for me, I'm the, certainly optimist.
Well, you already said that you don't expect to be full.
Are you talking about fiscal year 2019 or?
No, eighteen. Eighteen, because you already said in, well, yeah, we're still in seventeen, you're right.
Correct.
Sorry, we're still in seventeen.
So we go to fiscal year 2018. So are we talking this fiscal year or for next fiscal year?
Next fiscal year, eighteen.
Well, you know, we anticipate, it's our hope to put forty-three in each of the four academies and to lower our attrition rate. That's always our hope.
Right. Yeah, because I saw a hundred and twenty-two graduated. But that may, is that a normal attrition rate?
You know, it's, it's interesting, because we look at that, you know, from the academy, and we've taken a look at those statistics. We've had some academies, we didn't lose anyone. Okay? You know, we had one that had thirty-four that started the academy, they had thirty-four that graduated the academy. We've had others, though, that have lost several, that we, for a variety of reasons. Some, again, their, maybe their spouse got a job out of state and they left, or maybe they just decided, you know, this isn't for me. And, you know, again, there's a variety of reasons on why somebody doesn't graduate the academy. And then we go into phase training, which, again, you know, we've lost few, just few, or we've lost more. It really kind of just depends.
Right. And I read that last year, when the council approved the extra four million, they particularly wanted to address officers in the five-to-eight-year timeframe of their career, because that's when, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that's when apparently we were losing them, and that's particularly when you don't. Because by then, they're trained and hopefully they're going to have a long career. Is, are we doing a better job of retaining those people now?
Yeah, and the reason why that was done is we did an analysis to see how, what were the most, most number of people that were leaving and how long, what was your tenure that had on? And we found that we were losing a lot early on. Again, very competitive to be a police officer. Here, we go through the training and now somebody else can, who's also hiring, to go to them and offer them a lot more money and they end up, you know, taking it.
Right, and they don't have to train them, we've already trained them.
Exactly. So it is, it certainly did help. It absolutely helped. And sometimes you can't put a statistic on what you prevented. Often, you know, you can't, because, you know, how many more would we have lost? And I'll tell you, we have spoken to our police officers, you hear you had our POA President, Brian Morrow, who speaks with our police officers all the time, as we do. If it wasn't for that additional funding, we would have lost dozens of more officers. And so now we can't, you know, we can't put a number on it, because they didn't leave, which is a great thing. You know, obviously, I think we all agree. But they were telling us is that they were going to leave. Same with the Communications Division, is that, you know, Captain Hera can tell you, is that many more were going to leave if, you know, the mayor and the council, and you didn't, if you didn't do what you did. And so now, you know, that didn't happen. So that's, that's great news. For us, yes, we're still losing police officers, but it would have been so much worse if we didn't do what we did.
Great. Well, certainly, as a new council member, I'm certainly open to reviewing new data that you have and helping you to address, you know, the issues you have with both recruiting and retention. I think it's really, really, really important. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bree. Again, thank you for the presentation. I just have a couple of questions and some comments. Do we have the numbers in terms of the number of officers that are eligible to retire over the next five years?
I do have that. Just give me a moment. Over the next five years, so this would take us to fiscal year twenty-two, we have six hundred, just over six hundred police officers that would be eligible to retire over the next five years.
Okay, thank you. That's obviously a big number as well, too, that's up on the horizon. And then, lastly, and I know in your, in your comments, you mentioned that we're not just losing officers to the sheriff's department, although obviously, but they're the biggest game in town. Do we know when their contract is up or the timing of their negotiations by chance?
I think Brian Morrow's still here. Do we know when that's up?
Sheriff's contract.
Next year is going to be a big hit. That's when they're, hit their top tier and we're anticipating large retirements out of the sheriff's.
And do you know when their, when their contract is being renegotiated?
They're actually in the process right now.
So they're in process right now? Okay. Perfect. Well, let me first, Captain Hera, I appreciate all the work that you and your team have done, all the dispatchers there, and I appreciate, Vice Chair Bree, going there. And my visit there was incredibly enlightening. And the work that you all have done is amazing. And I appreciate all the hard work and dedication that you've put into this and getting to not only those nine-one-one calls, but the quality-of-life calls, which are some of the things that we often hear about a lot as well, too. It's not just those nine-one-one calls, but it's also those calls and how do we get those down? And the fact that you're hitting those and you're at where you're at in terms of your vacancies. You have folks who are already being trained up and getting ready to be full-time dispatchers. I think the work, again, you and your team are doing, are fantastic. I'm going to go back to what I said last week when we were hearing the budgets. I'm going to go back to, to what I said last week when we were hearing the budgets. And the number one thing I hear in my community is those officers on the streets. And how can we as a community support you all, the council, in making sure that officers are on the streets consistently? If not, even increase that presence. And while we can't address pay during this budget cycle, the one thing that we can address, which is, I think, just as important, is to give the department the tools that they need and the officers they need to be there on the streets every day in a safe environment and to protect our residents. And I have put at the top of my priority, public safety, number one. And I am not ashamed of it, I'm not ashamed to fight for it during this budget cycle. We are going to need it. And we're not only going to need it this year, we're going to have to need it, we're going to need it again next year as well too, because next year is going to be a challenging year as well. And so obviously I implore all of you as, as council members to, to take that into account and make sure that we are doing what we can to make sure that the tools are at their fingertips to protect our, our residents. And I would imagine as you go out into your communities in budget time and do your town halls, you're going to hear the same thing. And so this is not the end of this, this is going to be at the top of our list moving forward as a committee and addressing this issue and making sure the chief has everything at her disposal and officers have everything at their disposal to do a quality job. And I appreciate you keeping in contact with other chiefs around the country as well too, Chief Zimmerman, and please let me know what that conversation is turning like. Again, this is not a conversation that's, that's in a vacuum. Other cities across the country are having the same conversation, the same difficulties, and they're doing the same thing, they're trying to think outside the box as well too. And we're always competing. And so my hope is that we can have somewhat of a leg up on them and get there first to make sure that we have quality officers on the streets every day as well too. So thank you all for your hard work and this is definitely not over. And we are going to continue to tackle this issue in the coming year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.